Okay, so our call tomorrow will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, Mr. E. Maggie, you're close to the flag. You've got to leave in time.
Okay, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So for our roll call tonight, we're going to do something a little bit different, and that is because this is our first public hearing. What we'd like to do is consider instead of this being just a hearing, we would like this to be a community conversation. And probably you could feel more comfortable conversing with us if you knew who we were. So we're going to ask each of the commissioners to just give their name and give us just 30 seconds of a little background on why they're all commissioners, so you'll know who you're talking to. So we'll start over here at Glenn.
Okay, my name's Glenn Wiggins. I lived here a long while. I was involved with the city government for eight years, a bit of recovery. And I've been in the timber business all this time. And I'm still engaged in that in some small way.
I'm Connie Boeck. I live out in the beautiful area of Joyce. I am manager of the Custom Water Association. I've been on that board of trustees for several years, too. I'm also a member of the Community Action Council, and I sit as, right now, vice-chair of the County Planning Commission. I have an Alpepa farm, so I'm involved, I'm concerned about agriculture, our economy, our local development, and hope to make a very valuable contribution to this group.
My name is Cheryl Williams. I have been a resident of Clough County for 47 years of my life, and I'm honored to serve on the commission. I live out west on Freshwater Bay Road, and my husband and I enjoy the outdoors, like to hunt fish and backpack, and we love Clough County. And thank you for having me.
Good evening. I'm Sue Ford. I live in Squam. I served on this commission eight years ago, and I'm back to serve again. This is a great opportunity to hear from our citizens. I'm a citizen of this wonderful county. I own my own business, and I just think that this is a wonderful way to give back to the community.
My name is Barbara Christensen, and I've lived in Clough County for 19 years. This is my first time on the Charter Review Commission. I represent District 3, and I'm currently employees there at the county clerk.
My name is Steve Burke. I'm representing District 2. This is my first time on the charter, and I'm the director of the William Store Pool District, just across the street.
Yeah, switch it up.
I'm Maggie Roth. I've lived in the county since 1980. I am serving on this board from District 2 because I feel that the people in this county need a voice, and that's what I want to be, is a voice. I also attend a great deal of the county commissioners' meetings to know what's going on locally. My husband had served on this board three times, and I guess his inspiration to run this year was why I did it. I passed away last year, and I enjoy county politics.
My name is Linda Barthaus. I've lived in Clough County for 20 years this month. I'm also your elected county treasurer. This is my first time on the charter commission. Thank you.
My name's Mike Dory. I was chairman of the Board of Trustees back in the '70s when the charter, Home Rule Charter movement, started in intervening years, did a number of things, county commissioner, coached soccer, all kinds of things. My wife, Paula, happens to be here somewhere tonight. It was my designated driver because of that little incident last, two weeks ago. Glenn mentioned his claim to fame was of 60 years of marriage. Well, I had 60 years of backpacking in the Olympics, and I wore out my ligaments. So thanks to Paula, she's been carrying me around. It's a real humbling experience to go through the replacement. And then when I saw Bill Peach, I thought it was inside, I'd mentioned, because the commission was always looking for extra revenue. So this is a walking stick from Ireland, and these are weeds along the road. And if you're an old enough gray-haired Irish gent, the road crews, the county road crews, will give you buckets of tar that they put on before they chip seed them, so that you can cut these things off, paint them with road tar from the county, sell them at the next county fairs, make a little income. So it could be a revenue source for the county, just the road tar.
I like it. Good deal.
My name is Ted Miller. I'm from District 1 and currently serving on the Squam City Council. One of the reasons I wanted to run for Charter Review Commission and squeaked by, I think, 25 votes or something in the election was to facilitate communications and coordination between the cities and the county. We can have room for a lot of improvement by coordinating more closely, because the cities have some strong features and the county has some, and I think there's a lot of room for improvement and coordination.
And the other members of the commission that are not here tonight are Noah Judd and Rod Fleck and Ron Bell, and he sent me a brief little outline, so you know who he is. He is a semi-retired lawyer, an adjunct professor at Penn State College, and he teaches there and they're internship coordinator, and he teaches legal environments and business. He said, "I ran for the charter because I felt I could bring a helpful, independent perspective to the commission. As an example, I was the only candidate elected that was not on either of the five candidate slates running for Charter Review position to show my independence." And he has been involved in several things in the community. The other person who could not attend is Ken Hayes, and Ken is currently a Squam City Councilman, has been for six and a half years, served as mayor for four years. He has been on the Squam Planning Commission, Squam Boys and Girls Club Board, and the Dungeoness Valley Chamber of Commerce and Economic Development Council Board. He is a licensed architect. And then I am Nora Turner, and honored to be chair of this commission, and I have served on several other commissions, and I ran just because I enjoyed the experience. And so tonight, we look forward to hearing from all of you. We have one brief thing on our agenda before we open the public hearing, and that is approval of the minutes from February 2, 2015.
So moved.
Second. Okay, moved and seconded. Do you have to do that? Burke and Boeck? Yep. Okay. Yeah, we adopt the minutes estimated from our meeting on February 2. Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so approved. Okay, before I open the public hearing, I want to explain a couple things. There are some handouts on the table up there. They, you'll notice there are the print of charter. You can get the charter by going online and downloading it, but if you want to have a copy in your hand tonight, we have a few over there, and we put for reference all these returns, simply because the county's down to, I don't know, 15 or 20 of these, and they're obviously not going to print anymore until this review process is finished. So, but they're there for your review, and then we'll also take them to the other public hearings. The other things we have is the handout there is a one-page synopsis. Feel free to take one. Tells you what's in each of the articles. The reason that's helpful for us is when you get up to testify, if you have specific concern and you know which article you think it should go into, you let us know that. It's not print for your testimony, but if you want to do that, you can. And then the other thing you'll notice is there is a matrix that was over there, and what we as a commission did at our last meeting is we went through Articles 1, through all the articles, and people noted whether or not they had an interest in discussing something about that article. So that's what that matrix is about. We had no discussion about the substance of concerns, but rather just it shows the level of interest on this commission on particular articles. The speakers will be limited to three minutes, and then following that, we'll have another three minutes that the commission can ask clarifying questions. And so I encourage all the commission members, ensure your questions are just clarifiers. No one has to defend their position here, they're just to share with us. So, but sometimes you may not understand something, and we would like to clarify that. So hearing, does anyone else have a comment before we open the public hearing? Hearing none, I will read off the names of those who've already signed up, and when we have completed that list, then anybody who forgot to sign up is certainly welcome to come and contribute to the discussion. So the first person is Alan Anderson. Oh, yeah. Thank you.
I didn't hear that discussion.
Oh, she's our timer, so she'll tell you when it's pretty soon.
Okay, well, you tell me when to begin.
Oh, yeah, two minutes ago. We're just starting now.
What I was proposing to do was to thank you all for your public service. I'm impressed with your credentials. What I'm here for right now is simply to represent a group called Justice Restoration, and we are advocating for the adoption of Article 14 in the charter, and it would possibly be titled Citizens Grand Jury. I'd like to read this real quick. This is kind of an introduction to our group. According to a news article I was listening to not long ago, our country has approximately 47 million laws, rules, regulations, statutes, acts, codes, ordinances, and presidential, because I say so, that are known as executive orders, or the books. These undoubtedly include old outdated ones as well as the current one-stop governing or controlling the American population. Doesn't stand to reason that with this many rules, the average normal individual cannot move through their day without violating at least one of them. This country has evolved into the land of the fee and the home of the slave. There are currently more people in prison or jail in the United States than anywhere else in the world. Some reports even claim there are more prisoners in our country than the rest of the world's countries put together, and the U.S. has the highest per capita incarceration rate in the world. Eighty percent of those who are incarcerated are serving time for victimless crimes. Victimless crimes by definition refers to actions that have been made illegal, but which do not directly violate or threaten the rights of any other individual. They often involve consensual acts or solitary acts in which no other person is involved, for example prostitution, gambling, and illicit drugs. These people are otherwise law-abiding citizens. If there is no victim, how can there be a crime? Whatever happened to the idea that governments are instituted among men deriving their just powers from the consent of the government? I don't remember giving my consent to all of these laws, but then again, I don't remember speaking out against them either. I like the majority of my countrymen have been silent. Today, our government has defined silence as consent. If they create a new law and nobody says anything, it must be okay and is voted into the law. Does that mean the law is just? Does that mean the law represents the best interest of the country, the state, for the county? At the end of the day, the only thing it might be is that nobody said anything, and by today's standard, that fact alone equals consent. And here we are.
You can complete your thought. It's all right.
Our judicial system is broken and in desperate need of being replaced. We need a new and much simpler method of dispensing justice, and a citizen grand jury, independent of the judiciary and the prosecuting attorney's office, could be a giant step in that direction. I am here today representing a group who want to propose to the commission the adoption of an Article 14 that would incorporate such a fixture into Clough County Charter. Thank you.
Anyone have questions?
To oppose the Article 14, do you have a draft of such an article?
We don't yet, but we are going to definitely be working on one. Has there been this put in place anywhere else? To the best of my knowledge, there hasn't been, but there is a tremendous effort. I think there's 3,133 counties in this nation, and there is a movement in New York called National Liberty Alliance that is very, very proactive throughout the country right now.
Can I say again? What was the name of your group again?
Justice Restoration.
Justice Restoration. Any other questions, Maggie?
Do you have a webpage?
No, what we do right now, Maggie, is we simply refer people to NLA, National Liberty Alliance website. It's a huge website. We do have-
Smart Awareness.
-Smart Awareness, and we are on that website. I'm sorry.
Mike?
So that brings up kind of a procedural issue for the commission, and in the past they handle this different ways, is when somebody comes up with this sort of concept, you ask them to supply more information. Otherwise, the proxy attorneys would only appear to do some research, but that could be quite burdensome. So I guess I'd suggest maybe on our next agenda, at least, we briefly talk about procedures. So in this case, some kind of a, hopefully a standardized sort of a memo format of the concept, maybe the pros and the cons, if there are support organizations and websites, not, and then if there are sample ordinances that apply at county level. If those, if you could provide those things that would help this group and help the county, you'd not have to fund too much.
Okay, what I would ask if the commission is if you would send me a detailed request like that that I can use?
The commission will have to develop that, and we won't be doing that tonight because it's just a public hearing, and actually, the agenda's already set for the next public hearing, so it'll be a few meetings down the pipe.
Well, that's fine. That's fine. We've been working at this for a while.
Can you fill in the address, Glenn?
I'm just curious, is this a group that you're representing totally county-wide here?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, this kind of way, but it's still very, very new.
Is that it? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next person is Kai Albert.
I have a copy of my-
So much hate here for you.
Also for the commissioners, if you'd like to have these around. Good evening. I am Kai Albert.
Do we have those passed around?
Oh, sorry.
They got, they have stuff in burners.
Well, counting against my time, I'll give you two seconds.
No, no, we don't have a minute of time. We'll tell you when the time's started. We'll go back to the beginning for you. We have more to do. Okay, go ahead. All right, thank you.
I am Kai Albert, 4513 Montezan Road, Port Angeles. I respectfully request that you consider submitting to the voters this November the following two amendments to the Clough County Charter. The first one would be a charter amendment requiring that all tax increases and all fee increases over a certain threshold amount be approved by a vote of the people. I will suggest a threshold to ensure that only material fee increases have to go to the ballot, and for that, I would suggest half a million dollars a year. And to put that in perspective, for example, the entire annual revenues 2014 budget for the Department of Community Development were about 1.4 million, so this would be a little bit over a third of that department's budget, so that would be a fairly substantial fee increase. We certainly wouldn't want every time this small change in the fee having to go to the voters. The second amendment I'm proposing would require that any new county environmental or land use regulation or a change to any such existing regulation, when projected to result in an aggregate gross cost exceeding $5 million, as calculated in the cost benefit analysis to be commissioned by the county, have to be approved by a vote of the people. The county would be required to prepare such a cost benefit analysis for any such regulation or amendment to an existing regulation exceeding that threshold amount. Again, the threshold is intended to exclude the minimus changes or amendments that don't have a substantial impact on people's property rights or costs for them to do business. The focus on gross costs comes from the fact that all regulations under the Administrative Procedures Act are supposed to have a net benefit, benefits exceeding costs, so the net cost will always be a benefit if the analysis is properly done. This is to give the voters a shot at doing that cost benefit analysis, basically. The purpose of both of these amendments would be to ensure that those who have to bear the burden of taxes, fees, and regulations are also given a voice in their adoption. I'd like to add, it's my understanding that for many tax increases and regulations, the commissioners already have the discretion to put them to a vote of the people. For example, the Shoreline Master Plan, once it reaches the commissioner's desk, they could that to a vote of the people at their discretion. This would require future permissions to do so. Thank you for your consideration. Are there any questions?
Any questions?
Yes. I was just wondering, do you have any idea what this cost benefit analysis would be for, for the county? Do you assume that costs come in, or would it be, or is that difficult to prepare it and cost-
Well, it would depend on the complexity of the regulation. If you have a fairly complex and encompassing regulation like the recent YRAT-18 East Plan, the Department of Ecology was required by state law to prepare a cost benefit analysis. It went through various twists and turns. The first economist pronounced the rule illegal because the cost exceeded the benefits. He was ousted, and then he hired a second one, then he hired an outside one to review it. If it is something that is much more discreet, obviously, it would be a much more project, so it would be hard to give an estimate of what that would cost. I think it would depend very much on the issue. But I would also posit a more complex rule that has a much greater impact, like the Shoreline Master Plan, also merits more attention because it has a much more potential serious impact on people's property rights and their land values. Thank you.
Any other question? Ken?
Yeah, usually environmental regulations are mandated by the state, CEP, or some other organization, and not really originated, and kind of, how would that be, since the county has no power to negate a state or a municipal?
Well, it would apply, obviously, only to regulations that would have, that would be passed by the county. As you correctly point out, our charter cannot bind the state government, again, to use an example, the YRAT water rule, that took the form of a WAC, a part of the Washington Administrative Code, and the county would have no direct ability to put that to a vote because that is passed by the Department of Ecology and then enshrined in the state regulatory code. The Shoreline Master Plan, as an opposite example, is something that would be a county ordinance that would be passed by the Board of County Commissioners, and that is something that could be put to a vote of the people if such a measure were put on the ballot were to pass, or at the commissioner's discretion, they might just decide to put it to a vote of the people if the current commissioner thinks it's a good idea to do so.
Any other question?
Does this represent Kai, your own individual?
That is my, these are my individual proposals, extreme for myself, actually. Thank you very much.
Next person is Ed Bowen.
Good evening, Commissioner. Ed Bowen, PO Box 101, Clough Bay. So we hit the ground running. I've paid attention to your three other meetings you've held, and by the luxury of the citizen that's been recording it, I've stayed in tune with how your strategy is working, so I'm ready to hit the ground running tonight. I see you have, you did this matrix. It looks like you guys have an interest, so I kind of want to touch on that, and then I do have one thing I want to propose to you tonight. You talked about these subcommittees that are going to address these different sections, so, and I'm wondering how the public is going to be involved in that. And I just want to put on record tonight that I'm highly interested in Section 1.20, intergovernmental relations, how that develops, and I'm sure I will have input to that. And then the next one is Section 2.40 of the Board of County Commissioners. I'm definitely going to have some areas there that I would really like to be involved publicly as. Tonight, I would like to suggest to you, in consideration, something I call the returning of the county resources to the county management. And you kind of look at me like, what does that mean? Well, I think we need to sustain our county better than what we're doing, and we can't depend on outside handouts anymore. And so I'm going to propose to either Article 9 or Article 12, because I don't really know where this would lie, but I think with an Article 9 or not Article 12, we could put in there some type of language that calls upon the county to return all of its county trust lands to the management by the county. I don't believe those being handled by the state is in the best interest of the county in sustaining its longevity. Such things as the sustainable harvest calculation has been quite, in my opinion, a dereliction to the county receiving its just funds to operate, and so I'm going to put that on the agenda tonight, and I would like you to entertain a returning county natural resources to the management of the county. Then last, I'd like to go over in general something that kind of deals with how the people are engaged. And I noticed we pledge allegiance to the flag. We take these actions to reaffirm our faith and confidence in the way the system works. And I would solicit this commission to take and put at your forefront, stamp on your forehead, the first article, first section of the state's constitution, which reads, "All political power is inherent to the people, and governments derive their just powers from the consent of the government, and are established to protect and maintain individual rights." How can a citizen be engaged in this government if it doesn't, if that citizen doesn't believe their rights, their individual rights are consented on the authority of the government? So I would ask you to really, just like the Pledge of Allegiance, put that right at the forefront as you analyze everything. Is this meeting the individual rights of every citizen in this state?
Mike?
Turn me in.
Other questions? Ken?
Yeah, you talk about returning the trust lands to the county demonstration, and maybe the Article 9 or Article 12 is necessary. I don't have a lot of background here, and I was wondering, why have we all, have we delegated this to the state? Does anybody else here, I don't understand why the county would give up the right to control their own trust lands.
So in example, Grace Harbor does this. Grace Harbor does manage its county trust lands. I don't know the true history of why Clough County turned this over, but in general, it had to do with how the county received a lot of its trust lands, and who was the best manager of that, is my understanding, but I don't have the factual reason why Clough County trust lands are in the, in the control or in the management by the state.
Just, just for information, this, this county has the highest number of acres of county trust land in the state, 90,000 acres.
You can go to the DNR website, and they have a rather brief, but I think adequate summary of how taxes would fall, the lands came back to the state, to the counties, and the county said, "Holy cow, we don't do that. We don't manage timber." So the state decided they would offer, and the counties went along, that they would manage the trust lands. And then about, it could be off a year or two, but around 1999, the DNR coordinated the study of the whole history of timber trust lands and other trust lands that went eventually to the state to have a collaborated management system for various state trusts, university, all kinds of it. So if you can access that, it's probably close to an inch thick, that document, so if you're really into it, that's the best source I know, besides a summary on the DNR website.
A point that you did not make is that this state is now currently 250 million more feet behind in the production of, of harvest, just an interesting point.
That's part of land inspiration.
That's right.
Did Grace Harbor significantly beat the DNR, whatever, however, DNR gives us money, did they do better or worse, or the same?
I don't have those statistics for you, but from the citizens that I have, are associated with Grace Harbor, they've been pleased with the way that's managed, Grace Harbor. They would, they, when I went to them about the idea, the citizens themselves thought it was something that they've lived with all their life, and they saw benefit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So next is Harry Bell.
And so I apologize for my dress. I spent a very pleasant day in the field, and I would like to say, looking at forest flatlands, I don't usually dress this badly. I'm sorry. I'd like to make a couple of comments to you today, and these are for me. The first is, because I sit on the cooperative monitoring evaluation research team that evaluates, generates the science to evaluate our harsh practices rules, how well they're doing and how well they're not. And so what I realize, and what I suggest to you, is that whenever there are policy changes, especially if I use policy changes like the Shoreline Management Act, you should require a rigorous analysis of empirical- should require a rigorous analysis of empirical data that supports that policy, those policy changes. Because I, if you don't have good data, the policy is not good. It puts cost on people that are not fair, and it doesn't accomplish the thing you want to accomplish. And I would suggest to you, the Shoreline Master Plan now is in that category. And so good research that supports policy. The other thing I'd like to say, similar to what I heard earlier, is that sitting on the Assistant Advisory Committee for the Shoreline Master Plan, I'm convinced that a whole lot of people out there have no idea what that plan is all about, even with the hearings that are going on. And so I suggest maybe you want to put that up for a vote, so that there is a good public discussion of what it's all about, so that people then could vote in an informed way. And the last thing I'd like to say, I used to, I deal in forestry all the time. I live on Grace Harbor. I know the forestry staff on Grace Harbor. Their cost of operation is many, many, many times smaller than everyone else is charged when the DNR manages trust lands. Their revenue, I'm sure, is higher, and I would suggest you invite them up and talk about that, because it's a really big deal that you don't appreciate. Thank you.
Before you leave, Harry, does anybody have questions? I guess not.
Good. Very clear.
Stephanie Noble.
Stephanie Noble, 2345, East Third Avenue, Fort Angeles. Just a couple of things tonight to start the conversation, and I will email my comments since I haven't been writing for you tonight. This one's Article 4. Twice, and I understand that in the past, that this has been sent to the electorate and has twice been voted down, and I'm going to ask you not to put this on the ballot, which is to keep the, the DCD as an elected position. Crown County residents recognize that we can always maintain better control over our government when we preserve the ability to elect representatives to government positions. Any effort to change the position of Community Development Director to an appointed position contradicts our charter's intent. Appointed positions are often viewed by the public as someone might be voting something. So this position has been confirmed as an elected position twice by the voters. I think keeping that way. And then just briefly, probably expand on this at another time, but Article 2, I believe this is where this belongs. Charter Commission currently is reviewed every eight years, and a lot happens in eight years, especially since technology is so advanced and so rapid and worldwide and speed, et cetera. And I would suggest that the Charter Commission should review the county charter every five years. It's just a busy place. It's the duty as an elected commissioner on the board to protect the rights and liberties of the citizens of Crown County. So I'd like you to consider that.
Any other questions?
I do.
Have to see Ted.
I just wanted to thank you for biding your taking. I appreciate the time and effort you put in for that.
You're getting a lot of good feedback from a lot of people.
Does anybody have a remembrance of, maybe you do, my, of how this term was established and what cycles it? In other words, it was five, four, now it's eight, and prior to that, or something else?
What I recall is every commission I've been on has talked about changing the timeline, and it's been a moveable issue, five years, seven years, et cetera. It's an ongoing discussion.
It hasn't really had cost to that, but.
Thank you. In fact, I would just interject here that one thing that's interesting, if you want to look at what's happened in former charters, if you go on the website and click under Charter Review, you can get a history of every issue, this error being placed on the ballot by every Charter Review Commission that's gained existence, and which ones passed and which ones didn't. So it's kind of an interesting, more or less, history of Charter Reviews. Okay. Tom Schindler.
Hi, I'm Tom Schindler. I live up on the border road, and I want to thank you all for the work you're doing. I made a conscious decision not to do it again after having been on the last charter, because I knew I didn't have time to do it well, so. Good luck all of you. I guess it's not coincidental, but I'm the next speaker after our last one. I want to advocate very strongly for the exact opposite position she was arguing for. One of the things our charter put on the ballot was to repeal the provision of making the DCD director an elected one. I think the experience the last few years has shown why that has been an bad idea. I think the fact that it was a bad idea was not as evident to the public until, but maybe now at this point of remembering before it fades, people will remember and think, yeah, maybe we need a professional in that position. We don't like the county engineer, we don't like the county health officer, we don't elect everybody who works at the county. I've never been elected. I've been employed for about 30 years almost. But we do elect three county commissioners, one of whom is here tonight. He got elected. He ran, he had positions, his opponent had positions, they went all over the county, they talked to people, they had verbs in the paper, and that represents the viewpoint of the population as translated to politicians. Their job, the three county commissioners' job, is to translate the will of the people into legislation and policy. If you end up having all kinds of satellite elected people, you have conflicts, and when you have people who need to have a professional capacity to do their job, you can elect amateurs, and that's a problem. Those professionals should be appointed by the people you elect, by the people whose job is to be a politician. We don't expect them to be anything else, and we don't need a whole lot of politicians in Crown County. We just need three good ones who can then hire the rest of the people who need to be hired, and people who they can fire when they screw up, or they can hold their feet to the fire not to screw up. Or to say, you know, county policy is this, I don't care what your personal opinion is. If you can't carry out on a county policy, do something else. But if we can have people who get elected, for whatever reason, go off in a different direction, we don't have an efficient government, we have too many politicians. So I will make a promise to you, if you will put that on the ballot, then I will do what our county commission, our Charter Commission could not do last time, and I did not realize it till the last minute. As a commission, you cannot advocate for what you put on the ballot.
Time.
But somebody else can, and I will help do that.
Do you want to stay there and ask questions? Other questions for Tom?
I have one quick one. Tom is probably the best, somewhere at the top of all the techno folks in the county. If you have any thoughts on how to modernize county government, or one of the things this commission's already talked about is how to better increase the communication, because you already talked about managing citizens' county governments. Now you read a lot of journals, and if you see something that's appropriate, don't hesitate to offer it to us in the way of better website, better way to communicate between offices or between offices and the community. Do you have any thoughts?
I don't have any ready ones, but I'll definitely keep that in mind.
Thank you. Okay. Susan Schofer, paper, paper? Okay. Pretty close.
Good evening. I'm Susan Schofer, 214 Old Review Drive, Fort Angeles, Washington. I believe all of the three, the voters should have access to information to make wise decisions at election time. We had a lot of forums for people, but often they're, they're during the day, and people can't attend. Often they're at night, and elderly can't attend. So I met with some people last winter, about, almost about January, I thought, would the week actually would be useful to have a voter's guide for issues particularly. So I made Commissioner Chapman come also, and we discussed the need for a voter's guide. Commissioner Chapman was entirely opposed to a printed paper voter's guide, but we did reach an agreement that we could have an online voter's guide for issues, and the county already has one for candidates, you know, when there's candidates, but there was issues, there was no voter's guide at all for issues. So there, anyway, so we were able to arrange to have an online voter's guide for issues. And then last spring, Shunah sent me the format that they had completed for the online voter's guide for the issue section. However, what we don't have is a guide that, that some people, some people have access, they don't have access to computers, but they don't own the computer, so they can't get, they can't access that online voter's guide. So there, and then like I said, there's people working in the day, they can't go to forums, or the older, older people often can't get out at night. So I would like to see a printed issues section, a paper edition, could go out to the general population. I don't know how hard it would be to get a, also for candidates, but something I'd like you to consider. So I thought of one way to minimize the cost of a printed edition, and that's the main reason that Commissioner Chapman objected, was the cost of a printed edition's, without the voters. But, and I don't know if there's any technicalities that would prevent this, but I would like to see, perhaps you could put the voter's guide in the envelope at the same time that the ballot is mailed. I don't know if there's any reason that can't be done, but maybe that would save on cost. So anyway, that's something I'd like you to consider, and then I don't know how, like I said, the one candidate that's a bigger, more pages than that, but I would like to consider that, too. So there, because at this point, we have people who actually are not getting equal access to the information of the people on the, that have access to computers.
Time. Any other thoughts?
Not exactly, no. I just, I just had one more thought. Possibly for, to compensate for the cost of the printing costs, and basically, that's the cost you would have against the paper and the printing. So possibly the legislative authority that puts an issue on the ballot, a measure on the ballot, they could bear the cost of that, because they don't seem to hesitate putting, have hold of special elections, so they don't seem really hesitant, you know, for a special, the cost of a special election. So perhaps there's additional cost to be so on that. So that's something I'd like you to consider.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you. Beth completes the sign up list, but now we're open for anyone else who'd like to make a comment. So you wanted to state your name and address in case you weren't there.
Good evening. John Bourbon, Order 111, Harry Cole, Blake Soto. I didn't actually come here to propose anything tonight, but Alan Anderson brought up the proposed Article 14. I should mention to you that in some counties, I don't know if it's more than, I don't know how many counties, some counties in California, there are standing grand juries. One of their responsibilities is oversight of county government. They issue an annual report after they have studied the functions of county government. That's something you might want to consider.
Before you sit down, John, do you have to see if anybody has questions for you?
I have.
Any questions for John? So what are some ways to access that information?
I just did a quick search, Pervinshire County Grand Jury, and it lists the functions, and they have 19 members. The members are appointed. I can't tell you off the top of my head what that process is. I don't remember. But I do remember that their reports were quite substantial when I, when I lived there. They would probably issue a hundred, something like a hundred page report, and they would often be critical about the way certain departments were functioning, and suggest serious improvements or changes. I don't know if they suggested laws or ordinances. I can't say that.
John, it sounded like this would be a good idea to oversee state of the situation as well.
Yeah.
Keep it moving.
Okay.
There is something possibly similar. You know, maybe seven, eight years back, the state auditor's office was granted authority to do performance audit, along with their fiscal audit. So they're getting broader, you know, in their authority to look at performance, not just the old fiscal. So it couldn't be impressive how, how far they go down as far as local governments, because they've never been funded very well. Although there was an independent initiative that went with, did require some funding. So I know they have some funding to look at performance. How much? A similar, I've had a couple of citizens ask me about the Ombudsman concept in a county government, and generally, when the preholders met and said, they looked at that, they didn't even know how to pronounce it at the time, and it was mostly this foreign Swedish concept at the time, but over the years, that's taken some hold in some counties, too. So it could be somebody raises that in a public hearing.
This system, as I knew it, was something along the lines of Ombudsman System, except it involved a lot more people and a substantial sized jury. And then one other thing that was typical of their meetings, and contrary to the laws that we're usually used to these days, their meetings were secret. They did not meet in public.
Other questions? Thank you. Anybody else in the audience like to make a comment?
Hey, I got aluminum one light. I'm ready to put my ears in. I'm far within the swim. I'd like to speak in opposition to Tom, I didn't get Tom's last name.
Well, actually, you're speaking to us as to want us to present, opposing anybody else in the audience.
I'm not sure that I get it right. Sorry about that. I believe Tom works in the Community Development Department. The reason I was speaking in opposition to that, because contrary to what he said as an opinion, the people that I've talked to think that the elected position of Community Development Director is working quite well. And the gentleman earlier who spoke about Article 1, Section 1 of the state constitution, "All political powers inherent in the people, and governments derive their just powers from the consent of the government to protect and maintain individual rights." Nowhere in county government is that more explicit and evident for the need than in the Department of Community Development. I would absolutely call your attention to, prior to the electing of a Community Development Director, when we have an appointed one, it becomes a very volatile political position, i.e., the money to the Community Development Director when he was appointed was $40,000 or $50,000 more than it costs the county right now. I could be wrong in the number, but it's an approximate. The prior appointed individual walked away from this county with a golden umbrella and a ton of money, somewhere in the order of over $110,000 or $15,000, might even have been more than that. So to keep Community Development Director as an elected position, particularly with the power that that position has, is paramounty important to keeping the consent of the government in Article 1, Section 1. Thank you.
Before you leave, Mike, does anybody have a question?
I'm sorry?
Does anybody have questions above? Okay. Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience who'd like to make a comment?
Are we still doing the hearing, or are we on the next, the end of items?
We're still on the hearing.
Okay.
That, that's our agenda, it was the hearing today.
Oh, there's something proposed. How many do we have?
Yeah. But, all of six one, that's us now.
Are you done? Well, are you asking for public comments now?
Now we're still on the hearing. Does anybody else want to testify at the hearing? Okay. Hearing that, then we'll close the hearing. And the agenda does have public comments, so if someone has a comment they want to make, feel free to comment this time. And again, we'll have a two minute timeout.
Again, Commissioner Ed Bowman, P.O., Box 111. My public comment tonight is about process. You spent three meetings working your process on how this is going to work, so, and I've paid close attention to it. So I have three real quick items. One, you've satisfied tonight. I was always curious about public hearing, public comment, and the discussion, and I saw this experience tonight with this public hearing process, because I really liked how this worked, this worked for me. A lot of my neighbors and fellow citizens probably don't realize that this is the way it works. So I would advocate you educate our county on what the public hearing, that there would be a questioning period along with it. And then they would probably feel more involved and engaged to come give you a public comment during the hearing process. Secondly, are two points of order on the process, and it's not meant to criticize the clerk who does this for you on your website, but first off, the agenda for tonight's meeting is not on the county's website. The one posted for February twenty fifth is. This, I don't think caused a lot of problems tonight, because a lot of people are involved, but kind of need that fixed. The other one I personally have an issue with is the public contact point on the website is an email forum. I despise these things. It does not work for me, because I can't communicate with you. I don't know where this is going, I don't know how this is going to result, is it going to be a record for what I would like, an email address, I can send my comments, my suggestions, my materials to you in some form. Thank you.
In response to that, that is, when people send information to that email address, that's our central gathering point, and then every comment that comes in is shared with each other commission.
It's an abyss for the citizen. I don't know what it goes into.
Because if, for example, if someone sends a comment to an individual commission member, then they just would send that on to Trish in order for her to send it out to the entire commission. So it's about having equal information available to every mission.
I understand, but give me an email address, I'd feel more comfortable with that.
Do you want to, go ahead.
No, I just make, get a county web email address, pile it, charter review, at, column, whatever. I trust the email distribution system. Well, this form doesn't do that. It goes into, from a citizen's perspective, from someone who's involved in government a lot, this creates an abyss. Our governor is renowned at this abyss of you sending stuff to them, and it goes into a dark hole, and we don't have a clue, I don't have a copy of it, I don't have an email copy of what I sent you. I have to take concerted effort to cut and paste it into some kind of Word document so I even know what I sent you. Versus, if I send you an email, I have a record of that on my computer, on my email, Sentbox. I know what I sent you, I know what I wrote. But, I mean, it might seem petty to you, but someone that has a difficult time already communicating with government, I need it as simple as possible. These forms do not work for me, that's my only point.
I thought that we had, let me just clarify, Trish, why don't we have an email address on our website?
It says, Tom at the Charter Review Commission.
That's what you got. No phone number, no email address, no mailing address.
Media agenda. You showed the agenda.
Sorry. That's a printed page of the contact.
So don't email address on there?
No phone number, no address.
But you click somewhere to get to that form, right?
You click Contact Us.
Okay.
And that's what I get.
So you just want to have in addition an email address?
Email address.
Yep, that would work.
So you want my personal email address on?
Whatever you guys, process wise, think would work, I just.
This is a perfect one for us. Barbara at Crown County.
I just received an email today from somebody that said, so, I went on the website, all I found was an email address, is that how I contacted? And I went, yeah.
Do we have a method, I guess I can address this to Trish, a method where there's confirmation given when you receive requests or information?
When I received them, I asked, I'd done that, and said, you know, I forwarded your information to the Charter Review Commission.
So they know that you have received it, okay?
I see him, go ahead, come up, Tom, make a public comment.
I just want to tell that the reason that those contact forms are on some of the webpages is because when you put an email address on the webpage, it harbors spam like you not believe.
Good point.
And I work in IT now, not ECD, and we fight spam incredibly. More email comes in as in spam than a real business.
Good point.
And that's why I send that way. But there are ways of making auto confirmations, you know, so if you're sending test tickets to my boss, I'm sure she could deal with it.
Thank you. Okay, yes.
Do you have a suggestion? Because I understand you're concerning your point of the citizens not understanding this process. Do you have a suggestion on a better way for us to communicate to the public?
Well, what you did tonight with this public hearing, and then you had the question thing, oh, this was beautiful. And her video is going to get it out there, help a lot of my neighbors that watch that. They wouldn't come in tonight, because all they think they're going to do is stand at a podium and talk to a group that doesn't respond back. Questioning is responding back, and I think that's a beautiful procedure you're implementing right now, and I really applaud you for this. And I would ask of you to get this method out to the citizens of the county, because I bet you you'd get a lot more people to come in here and provide your comment, because they know it's not a two-way interaction, but it's at least not just they, I'm talking to a tape recorder, because that's how a lot of folks feel about public hearings.
Thank you. Okay, are there anybody else, any other individuals who'd like to make a comment? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment period, and the next item on our agenda is to announce our next meeting. Our next meeting will be another public hearing, it will be out of the courts, it will be February twenty fifth, and it will be in City Hall. Okay, we'll start at six thirty. For the commission members, we will have a carpooling available, it's going to range for a van, and so we can have one short of the quorum, ride in the van, and then the rest in the car. And for the general public, we did last meeting adopt a full schedule for the coming year. We didn't put that on the table for you tonight, simply because it has a couple of minor glitches in it. They're very minor, but we can't change them until we have a commission discussion. So that will be on our agenda on the weekend. Once those little glitches are cleaned up, then you will have the entire year's schedule of public hearings, regular meetings, et cetera. So seeing nothing else on our agenda, I want to again thank you all for coming tonight and participating. Can I have a question?
The van at the courts, you or Trish?
Trish is arranging the van.
I have a question about our subcommittees that we set up. I don't know when they're supposed to start the meeting, if we're supposed to be talking among ourselves now, or if we're waiting for a comment back from the prosecuting attorney as to whether or not we need to make these public meetings and announce them, and when we're going to split up the other protocols.
In answer to that, you'll notice, I think Trish set up the agenda for the twenty fifth. We are specifically, on the twenty fifth agenda, have an allocation for presentation from our legal advisor, so we can get some of those things settled, and then, so we'll have an answer for your question at the end of the last meeting. But the second part of your question is when, how are we going to divide up those that have a lot of people on? That discussion will not be held until we actually have a regular meeting. So that will probably be on March eleventh, unless you want me to add that to the agenda on March second. But the March second is a public hearing in Squim. We probably should just leave that as a public hearing, and then have that substantive discussion on March second, which is a regular meeting.
March sixteen.
March eleventh, yeah, I get my finger on the long button here. So March eleventh will be a regular meeting.
Is a prosecuting attorney going to be at the courts meeting?
Is a prosecuting attorney going to be at the courts meeting?
I would not miss it.
I guess.
Well, it doesn't really help if he's going to explain it if he's not there.
Right. Good question. Does that work for you, Mark? We answered all the questions, and here we are, I'm at just seven thirty, are we efficient or what? So I will officially adjourn the meeting, and see you all on February twenty fifth on our way to court.